Welcome to Rogue Bo's, this is the Common Sense series. I'm going to do some stuff around talking politics, social things, whatever is kind of at topic and what I want to talk about, but this one is related to councils in Australia. More specifically, this one's going to be a hell of a rant about the Bayside City Council now. I will just state that I think a lot of councils, if not most, are the same. They have the same tactics, the same kind of protocol with things. So this isn't, you know, just privy to the Bayside City Council, and that's no excuse for the councils, but we, you know, have received a lot of information from numerous people, not just in Victoria, not just from Bayside City Council, but all over Australia with, you know, the stupidity and hypocrisy from their own councils with certain things everyday Australians have had to deal with. So anyhow, people might ask, you know, I'm going to start this off this way, why bother, why bother doing this podcast about a council? Why bother, you know, everyone has to go through the same problems with councils. You know, you're just mad because you had to, you know, your bill's taken a little bit longer to get approval and you're, you know, you're trying to, you know, smear the council. Look, 10 or 15% of that might be true. I am pissed off at the time these people have wasted, the resources, the energy, the stress, the, you know, the money's one thing, whatever, money comes and goes, but it's everything few and far between that that it has caused. And most importantly was printing my address, which I'll get to later in newspapers because of these people. But why, why do this? That's the exact reason why I'm doing it. Because people ask, why do this? Nobody talks about it. No one's willing to discuss just how far our councils in Australia have gone, the amounts of powers they have. A council has more power on your day-to-day life for your house, your land than the Prime Minister does, than the State Premier does, unless you're in Victoria, of course. But you get my point, right? The council can really dictate what you're doing with your residents, your property, your land, and really put their thumb on you. So that goes with everything, rubbish removal, it goes with, you know, maintaining your nature strip, it goes with, you know, wanting to put a shit in the backyard, whatever it is, right? They can really cause problems for your everyday life and just petty shit that is just annoying, right? So that's the reason why I'm doing this. No one, no one talks about it. Everyone just thinks, oh, we'd like to go through a bugger, just suck it up. Why should we? Why shouldn't we all go through the process that I just went through and I've had experience with should not be bestowed on everyday Australians that can barely afford the build that they're trying to engage in or the extension or the renovation, whatever it is, right? That's why I need to speak up. And as I said, 10 or 15% of this was me. And then picking the wrong guy and I'm pissed off about it and I'm going to, I'm going to go after him now. Yep, I totally agree with you. I'm not, I'm not running away from that. But what really got me was the amount of emails I got throughout this process of support and also of, hey, this is my story I've had with Bayside City Council. Hey, this is my story I've had with this council or that council. And some of the stuff was, you know, as you'll hear later on in a few of the interviews that I have, have engaged in. You know, it's tear-jerking stuff, what these people do. They, you know, everyone thinks it's just a council, how bad can it be? But they, they change and dictate people's lives. And it just should not be the case. Not in Australia, 2021, it's just, their powers need to be reined back heavily. Their pot of gold and their funds need to be severely pegged back. And I don't know how we get to that point. We'll discuss that a little bit later in the podcast, but bear with me if you want to hear some crazy stuff. But I want to set the scene about how this all started. So the year after, I was part of a championship-winning team, Golden State Warriors, 2015, come home. And there was a property in Beaumouris. I wasn't actively looking at the time. I'd actually had a few people send me this address before, you got to look at this property, it's really nice, it's awesome, you'd love it. This property was for sale for a long, long time. It was 18 months on the market. So I never went out. I had a thing always about Beach Road. For those not familiar, Beach Road, you know, runs basically almost all the way to the city. It joins up to, you know, essentially the, what is that? Whatever it is that joins on to, you know, St Kewada and down to Port Melbourne, but you know, basically goes to a part of Brighton, for those not familiar, and goes all the way up to basically Maudiallick, a long stretch of Beach Road, exactly what it's named, right? So very, very nice part of Victoria, a lot of affluent suburbs in that area. And Bayside City Council itself has a lot of affluent suburbs, most notably Brighton, one of the most elite suburbs in Melbourne. And then you've got from there, you know, three or four, four or five suburbs between Brighton and Beaumouris as you're going out of the city. So that's where Beaumouris is for those listeners that don't know Victoria very well. But I never wanted to live on Beach Road. Beach Road is a beautiful part of the world, but it's, I guess, known by everyone. If you live on Beach Road, you've made it. And that's not the reason why I didn't want to live there. I didn't want to live there because it's a main road. It's a main road. Some people use it to drive into the city because it usually flows much nicer than the highway, Napaian Highway and the freeway. It's got a lot of cyclists on it day-to-day, just a very busy road. And I always was cognizant of not having my family live in a, I was, you know, fortunate enough to make these decisions on a street that was a kind of a main road or thoroughfare because a bull walk rolls out on the road, your dog gets out, bang, you're on a main road, like, you know what comes with that. So it was just not something I was comfortable with. So anyway, whenever I got, I got this document, probably 18 months before I bought it, someone sent me a document about it online, check this house out. As soon as I saw Beach Road, I was like, nah, don't want, don't want anything to do with it. Little did I realise, it's not actually on Beach Road. So this part of Beaumouris, which makes it very unique, is a cliff-top landholding. It is a Beach Road address, but there is a part of Beach Road where there's no houses. That's where this lies. So to access the property, you actually have to go up a side street and come in from the back. And for some reason, there was an open inspection. I was in the area, so I saw it was, you know, around about the time I was passing through, so I stopped in and I saw the property and I was like, wow, this is amazing. You know, I'd love to, to live here one day. We, we owned a property, a townhouse in Beaumouris prior to that, that we lived in for a couple of years. And when I was, or not lived in, that we stayed in for a month at a time when we were in Australia and it was rented for the rest of the time. But, and really liked Beaumouris. We liked that it was a quiet suburb, it generally an older population, quiet, family values, all those kinds of things that we liked. And, you know, I did a lot of study around where we wanted to settle in Melbourne. When I was done playing, I did this 10, 15 years ago. And Beaumouris, Blackrock were kind of, you know, possibly even, even Mentone or Parkdale were kind of the suburbs where I wanted to be, a bit more kind of closer to businesses I ran and whatnot, but not too close to the city, but close enough to the city. So anyway, that's the whole spiel of this property. So ended up going through the open home, buy this property, you know, we're pumped about it and we bought it. It was renovated a couple of years before, off 1950s, had the original shell of the original house that they extended above second story and then went, went down deep. So there were remnants that were older and it was, it was a good mix, Hampton-style house, beautiful. Don't get me wrong, right? So a very, very nice house. At that, at that point, we were like, we'd love to move in here one day and raise a family, but I still was playing in the NBA another, you know, four or five years and obviously playing in the NBL in Sydney. So we never lived in it. We had it rented immediately. There was a property to the rear of that. So this 401 Beach Road, the original house we bought is oceanfront cliff-top. The one, one lot off of that behind us. It was, whenever we'd go visit the house, this, this property, you could, you could barely see the house. It was fully overgrown, high grass, shrubs. The house did not look in a good state. I think it was an older couple that lived there, which is fine. It was, it was their, their home since, I believe since the 50s, 60s, 70s. I could be wrong, but they'd been there a very, very long time. And I always had my eye on it thinking, that's going to come up for sale one day. I'd love to purchase it and then extend our property into that one and get a bigger yard and just have a nice landholding in a prestigious part of Beaumouris or Melbourne that I thought still at that point hadn't really become what it is today. It was, it was trending upwards when I bought in there in 2011, a townhouse. When I studied the area and really wanted to invest in it, it was still a nice suburb, but now it's caught wind for a lot of people and a lot of people like living there. So funnily enough, that property comes up in, I think it was 2018, comes up for sale, goes to auction. I paid way over for it. Actually battled a lady. I didn't, I was actually playing for the Lakers at the time. I actually just got waived, funnily enough. And I remember I had someone go and bid for me. I had a mate go and do the open inspections and paid massive overs. Like I said, the lady that I was bidding against actually emailed me not long ago. So shout out if she's listening to this, asking if I was going to buy another property that was adjoining that because she said she doesn't want to bid against me again and get strung out. And I assured her that, no, I'm kind of done purchasing land in this area, especially with what I'm going through right now. So that was a funny little tidbit. But end up buying it at overs, right? It was a complete knockdown. The house was in disarray. My friend, in fact, that went and visited the property for me a couple of weeks before the auction, he calls me, he goes, I can't go in the house. I said, what do you mean? He goes, that the agents won't let me in the house. They said it's, it's not even safe enough to walk into the home from a liability point of view and agency there want to be responsible if something happened. I said, man, how bad can it be? He goes, well, they've said one side of the house, the footings have dropped completely and collapsed. It's like, you know, almost like a ramp of a house. One way you're walking uphill, the other way you're walking downhill. So it was, you know, it was not, not in a good state, right? So, you know, my plan was to knock it down and use the land anyway. So I wasn't too fussed about it. I bought that strictly for, for land. So then had started the process in 2018, 19 with engaging an architect, I think 2019, and starting to draw up plans. Our initial plan was to renovate the existing home that we purchased and extend off it, right? So we thought, you know, we love this house, love everything it's about. And, but there were, there were small little things that, that weren't really done right because it was an extension add-on bitsa. It just wasn't, it didn't utilise what the property was in our opinion, right? But anyhow, so we go through all these plans about the extension, how can we do the basement, you know, so the people that have done builds before, sometimes renovations of existing can be just as expensive, if not a little bit below what a fresh build is because you're dealing with a lot of different circumstances. You're dealing with, you know, having to brace certain areas of the house so it doesn't collapse while you're renovating X, Y, Z. For our instance was if you put in a basement, you have to brace the structure of the house if you're going under it, which is very, very expensive and time-consuming. So we got to a point where we thought, you know what? It might be better just to go blank canvas and demolish that house, which would be a shame. Don't get me wrong. And it really tore me up mentally a little bit because I'm like, it's such a shame to get rid of this home because it's, it's really nice. But it just wasn't exactly what we wanted. And we came to the consensus that if we're going to spend this kind of money, millions and millions of dollars on a dream home build, we want it perfect. And I think that, you know, I'm my right to do that and our family was and we have the money to do it. So that was kind of the decision we made. So the rental was going to be within 80% of a brand-new build cost. So we were within 20%. We said, you know what? Let's go fresh build. So we moved forward. I'll give you a quick example of how militant the area was or is, or how I learnt it was, just by accident. We had tenants in the property for three or four years, five years from the time we purchased it, just to keep the thing ticking over and make sure it could pay its own bills. Very expensive land tax holding that, that property. I can tell you that much, didn't really make much money from the rent, if you can believe it or not. But one example was that I had a tenant move out. They damaged the hardwood floors. So they had engaged a company towards the end of their lease as they were moving out to come in, belt sand the floors and relacquer them and do those, the good deeds that a tenant generally should do if they've damaged something. I'm in, I'm in the US at the time. I get an email come through to kind of my public email account that's on my website that goes through my, my personal assistant that helps out, get it forwarded to me. It's council saying, hey, we're going to find you for illegal dumping. I said, what the hell is this? So I read this. So my property, as I said, is perched on the top of a hill on Beach Road. There's a reserve between my property and Beach Road to get down. You know, it's, I can't even tell you how many metres up, up high it is, but it's a decent drop. If you, if you fell off it, you'd be struggling to survive. But, you know, so the people that have sanded the floor, there's a reserve there and they've just dumped the sandings, wood, wood sandings or whatever, they've just dumped it in that reserve. So there's obviously a neighbour, we're pretty sure we know who it is. It's kitty corner opposite from us, that neighbour must sit on the balcony with binoculars, just, you know, supposedly looking at birds, but we don't think she does or he does, just looking at, making sure no one does anything silly. And look, I don't condone what they did, they shouldn't have done it. But anyway, so someone calls the council. So now I'm like, getting in touch with the council. I've engaged with them straight away, said, hey, I'm, I'm living in the US, it's rented, how can I help you? And I was really forthcoming and open and honest and got them in touch with the tenants, got them in touch with my PA to come and have a look at some things. And then they, they finally figured out that it was the people sanding the floor. I think they got in touch with them. I don't know how that ended, but I was, you know, the moral story is that I'd already had dealings with the council when I was, I tried to handle it as professionally as I could and try to really help them out because number one, I didn't really get blamed for it. Number two, you know, they, they would ask them questions, so I tried to help them best my ability. So the next one was someone cut a tree branch or branches that were on one side of my home that were basically the only thing I would get out of those branches being removed is I'd be able to see my neighbour's window better. The tree was on my property and I end up getting a letter saying, hey, you know, we know you've illegally cut some trees down or some branches. Said, okay, I've got a tenant in there once again. I'm not living there in the US. Let me know how I can help. Have my PA go out there, meet them. My PA went down there, took photos of the tree, sent it to me. I said, even if I was, even if I did cut that tree, why, what's my motivation to look into someone's window or wall on the side of their house? So obviously someone else has cut it with a better motivation than I, than I have. So end up, they investigate me and we, you know, nothing happens. Don't, don't hear from anything again. Like I said, I was, I wasted my time, resources to try and help them figure out who it was and whatever. And, but just an example of how militant this area is and how crazy it is, you know, with some of this stuff. So I kind of knew that, right? So I knew the area was sensitive. I knew when I bought there that it was, it was a pretty sensitive area. Not to that extent, but I knew, you know, there were some issues. You can't just come in there and bulldoze trees out, which we never bought in that area to do that. Anyhow, because it was so sensitive, before we even finalised the plans for the build, we engaged the council. Let me say that again, before I even finalised the plans, the drafts for our property, we engaged the council. Council made comment, the planner said that they've never seen this before. Ever rarely does someone make or get in touch with the council before their plans are finalised. What generally happens is, you know, husband, wife, architect, they finalise their plans after, you know, six months and they lodge them and they say, we want this. And the council has to go back and say, well, you know, we're probably going to not pass it because of this or can you change this? Whereas we said, here is our plans, here's our, our canvas of plans. Let us know what is frowned upon, what's borderline, what's great, what's within code, what's not. We want your feedback. So I engaged them from day one. So I want to make that clear and that's on record and it's noted, right? So we went back, I think it was three or four times with plans and, and they were, they were great. The planning division in Bayside City Council did their job. They'll, they'll, we had no issues with them whatsoever and they must be commended. Like I've obviously got a pretty hard stick for, you know, on the back of most, most councillors and most councils, but the planning division did their job. They've gone, they've gone to school, they've gone to university, they've studied, you know, planning, development, architecture, all that kind of stuff. And they're, they're based all their decisions on that. And we had no issues with them. We dealt with them pretty well. So, but just the fact that they made that comment of like, we, we don't see this very often, you know, was, was kind of, made me feel good that I was, I was doing the right thing. Until I didn't know who the Beaumouris Conservation Society was and the political pool they had with council. So they are, you know, a minority group that's very well organised, militants. They, they mobilise well online and social media and they've got their little groups and they can have, have people pop up at a protest on the drop of a dime. So what I believe is I was supposed to reach out to them to ask for permission as well and keep them in the loop. And I had no idea. I'm new to this. I'm new to building, new to dealing with all this political bullshit we've got here in Australia. I'm kind of, hey man, like what I need to do, what's the rules? Let me do it. Tick the box. Let's get on with life. But that, those days are gone in Australia, whether it's council, whether it's politics, whether it's buying a car, whether it's whatever you're doing. We're the most overlegislative country in the world for a reason. It's going to continue to get worse until we start poking, pushing, punching back. So this group then is pissed off. Why weren't we notified about this? And they felt blindsided. And I come to find out the lady's house who, who I demolished, the house that was, you know, had footings dropped. We got to demolish it, had footings dropped. Soon as they go to demolish it, the demo, demo boys call me and say, we've got a bit of an issue. I said, what's the issue now? They said, we've got asbestos in the, in the home. We can't just come and demolish this. We've got to call the, the big boys out with the gloves and all that kind of shit on the hazmat suits, whatever they're wearing. I'm not sure, but they have to come and remove it first before we can do anything. So full of asbestos, footings dropped, yard overgrown, huge fire hazard. The yard was beyond the fire hazard. You drop, imagine that thing, the whole, the whole suburb would be going up. So they were pissed off also because the lady that owned that house was somehow involved with the Beaumouris Conservation Society. I believe a board member at one time heavily involved. So it was, it wasn't, it taken a while that I demolished the house full of asbestos. That was better known as the leaning tower of Pisa. But they, they mobilise, these militant antagonists at the BCS. They organise a mini show of force at the property during lockdowns of all times, during lockdowns. And these people that are all about the community and whatnot, it's lockdowns. They organise a, a walk which they then later claim they were doing their exercise and just happened to all show up at my property at the same time whilst a TV crew was there to film their sad faces at the front of my property saying how bad this monstrosity ever built is going to be for their lives and the community and the environment and the birds. And, you know, I mean, it's, it's just one of those things that bothers your mind. But I digress. So we move on. I guess some, some advice that I got through this, which I just mentioned really quickly was, I couldn't do this because I'm doing a massive demo build that everybody knows about, is don't lodge it with council. I actually got this advice. Do it and ask for forgiveness later. Let me say that again. Don't lodge a permit with council to remove a tree, build your, like, build your shed, you know, move your driveway a little bit over. Don't lodge a permit. Just do it and ask for forgiveness. And I was like, as long as that sounds, it's right. Because it's going to get done much quicker. By the time you lodge a permit, get a, get some feedback from the council back, that's going to be a couple of months. Then you get, get it back to the council again before someone even reads it. There's another couple of months. Then someone signs it. Then someone sends it back. And then you got to get another permit to say you're okay to go ahead, you know, 12, 18, 24 months before you can even put your little shed up. So just, just a piece of advice for you that it rings true in 2021. The honest way he's gone, you try to do the honest thing, you get shat on. But as I said, I'm new to all this. I have no idea how to handle it. So this is all over the news, mind you, this footage. They have, you know, the Beaumouris Conservation Society, you know, basically crying that a, you know, a big mean basketballer is coming to Beaumouris to build a big mansion. So they weren't too happy. Sad faces all over the news, blah, 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 blah. So I get some people that know, that I talk to that have a little bit of power in, in Bayside Council, that know people, that know people. They said, you know, try to contact the BCS and make contact there. So I contact them. I can't remember who I spoke to. One of the, you know, many old white crusty men they have on that board there or, or women. By the way, BCS, if you want to take them seriously about, you know, good of the community inequality, you might want to get some wogs or someone, someone ethnic on your board there, please. Because it's, it just seems like it's people that came over from Queen of England's old yacht, judging by the names on your board. But just a word of advice there, wouldn't go astray. Same as you, Bayside City Council, a lot of English names all over your councils. When, when you, when you're spruiking equality and all that kind of stuff, yeah, it's kind of pretty noticeable. Anyhow, story for another day. So I contacted the BCS, I speak to a fellow there. This is Andrew Bogut, how you going? What? Why are you calling me? I said, I'm trying to engage with you guys, you know, see what the problem is so we can figure something out. Oh, you know, he was taking, he had no idea while, you know, he had an idea why I was calling, but he's like, why, why are you calling me? This is not how this process works, which I had no idea about. Gives me nothing, really gives me potatoes on the phone, sputtering and splattering all over the phone. Anyway, I call a few other people. They, they basically don't return my calls. So I get some, get some advice to contact councillors that are involved at Bayside City Council. So this is where our friend, Clark Martin comes in, get a hold of him. I call him, I speak to him. You know, a lot of political claptrap in, in every sentence that he spews out. So I noticed that straight away. I'm like, here we go. This is going to be fun. You know, you ask him a yes or no question and you get an answer that goes for 40 seconds that doesn't answer even what the weather is outside. So he's telling me, do the right thing, you know, we'd love to have you in the community, but you gotta, you gotta, you know, make sure that Beaumouris Conservation Society is involved. You know, they're really taken aback by the fact that they, they read about your plans and then, you know, that once it was posted, no one even told them. And I'm thinking, who are you? Why do I need to tell Beaumouris Conservation Society about what I, what I want to build for my family? I don't need to tell, like, it's ridiculous. Like, what world are we living in? If they're the council, notify, notify the people, the good people of Bayside City Council that the council don't make decisions. Beaumouris Conservation Society do. Lodge your permits and plans with them. But that's not how things work. This fellow also has the nerve to say that, you know, if you, it'd be really, you know, it'd be really a good thing if, if you offered some of your time, do some clinics. We're, we're in the process of building a new facility or doing a facility renovation. It was one of the two. I don't know if it was at King Club or somewhere in Bayside City Council, for basketball courts, basketball centre. And it'd be great if you could come through and donate your time. These are the kind of things that I do for charities. But if I do them for enterprise, I charge money for them. That's just the way the world works, right? You can't expect me to show up and, and do things for your council, your corporation, your, your basketball club you're selling tickets for, and you still need to pay me for my time, right? Unless it is for a charity, I'll do it. Generally, if I like the charity and what it's about, generally for kids, I'll usually do some things. But he had the gall to tell me that. Like, I didn't even know this guy, you know, you should do some clinics for us once in the area, this, that, that'll help, that'll help. If you commit to that, that'll help push some things through, wink, wink, nudge, nudge. I'm like, mate, here we go. So that all happens. I speak to him. And then a day later, another news article comes out, which wasn't out that night. And it's got good old Clark Martin on, on, on the old news telecast. Now, I had someone call me and tell me this. I had someone call me and say, the councillor of Beaumouris, from Beaumouris Bayside City Council has just said, you're breaking the law. I said, what? I said, no way. He wouldn't have said that. I said, yeah, yeah, yeah. He just said something along those lines. So I end up speaking to him again the next day. I said, hey, what's the deal with, there was a councillor. I didn't even realise it was him because the person that called me said, some council blokes just said you're breaking the law. So what's the deal with someone saying I'm breaking the law? I asked Clark Martin this on the phone the next day. Oh, no, that wasn't me. I never, I never said that. I've never said that. I've never said anything of the kind. I said, okay, cool. So I took, I took nothing of it because I, I was taking it word of mouth from a mate that saw it on the news. So I contacted my mate and I said, look, do you have, do you have a clipping of that or tell me where you saw it? He goes, yeah, Channel 9 News or, I think it was nine or seven. I've, I've actually recorded it with my phone off my TV as a sent to me. Listen to it. Put the video clip to this day on my computer and on my phone still saved, along the lines of, nobody comes to Beaumouris and breaks the law, point blank. So I mean, borderline defamatory, had that case. Why bother following it up with these people? But basically, he's calling me a criminal for building a house I don't want to build. This is the kind of smear campaign a councillor in Bayside City Council has, has, has engaged in because he's heavily in bed with the minority militant fringe group of, of Karens, let's just say it, the Beaumouris Conservation Society. So just, just something interesting to note. But yeah, I mean, he, from what I understand, he's looking to run in Victorian politics. He's looking to, to move his way up. This is, this is dead set. And judging by that phone call of, I can't recall saying it or I didn't say it, he's going to fit in very well in Victorian government. So he'll, he'll slither his way right in there and, and they'll love him. They'll, they'll see him as a great piece of the team. Anyhow, I meet with the Beaumouris Conservation Society and my architect via a painful few hours via Zoom. So a lot of these meetings, we wanted to meet with them, which was organised by Clark Martin. It was organised by Conservation Society and organised by my architect, I think it was myself, my architect and our, our planner, our town planner. And then had three or four of the conservation people and a few councillors on it, one of which was, was good old Clark Martin, good old Clarky. So everything was done via Zoom because the lockdowns were on and off. And, you know, Victoria was in a bit of a shit shot, that all still is to this day. So Victoria was still in the same shit show it is now. And... So Victoria was still in the same shit show it is now. And um. I just get to sit around on a Zoom call and be told by a bunch of people from Bemore- Morris Con- Conservation Society of. What I should and shouldn't do with my build. So, I mean, it was just mind boggling. I I'm thinking, I want to build something special. I don't do things half ass, um whether it's with cars, whether it's with poker, whether it's with, you know, whatever it is. I try to do um things um to a really quality level and it'd be the same with this build, I'd make sure that it's, you know, something to be proud of, not only for myself, but the community. Like people can be like, wow, that's a very nice home. That's, you know, um instead of the tall, hoppy Australian syndrome of like, ah, prick's got too much money, you know? It's like, no, you know, I can respect that someone has a nice home or a nice car and they've spent the time and money to to make it look very nice. But that's an Australian quality that we're slowly losing more and more every day. And, you know, you blame the media a little bit for it, you blame our society, you blame the way we think here in Australia at times. And it's not everyone, but it's just something that's really poisonous in our society, which is a different tangent that I can go on about for days and days. But I speak to a mate of mine, I I put this in here just because um. He brought this, he brought this up for me. Um I've got a friend, a very well-known friend, actually, I'm not going to mention his name and embarrass him, he's pretty well-known fella. Um in the world of um what we do, but. I had a conversation about him, you know, how's your build going, Bo, this, that. I said, mate, you know, he's he's a conservationist, um. So are you bloody greenies, man? You guys just just cause problems uh non-stop. Uh I I don't get it. And he pulled me up, he goes, mate. Do not put me as a conservationist um in the same pot as these these people that you're dealing with. They are not conservationists. And I'm like, what? That's weird. So I've never never really heard that. He's some my my person I'm talking to, he he did a lot of um ocean conservation work. So, you know, obviously seeing um issues of animals in the ocean, um far out of sea and far out at sea. And making sure that um animals were well kept and if there were things around their necks or throats or plastic or this or that, that was what he did, right? So he goes, look, these people that you're dealing with, the nimby type people, they 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 kill our cause. I said, that's strange, why? He goes, because whenever we go and try to raise money, whenever we go and try to ask people to to help, um help out, you know, the plight of what's going on in the oceans. That we we find, we need funding for that, even to study it, even to get boats out there, even to get resources. They laugh us out of the room because their group is this greenies, the same as those greenies that try to stop a build or to try to stop a tree cutting down. And I thought, that's a valid point. I ne- never really realised that. So there's actually infighting within the green groups, um where the the pure people that are doing it for the right reasons. Which I would argue would be maybe one tenth of these green political bananas that we hear from every now and then. Um one tenth probably have the have the right, that's being generous, one 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 hundredth probably have the right mindset. The rest are just puppets for. The Labour Party or Liberal Party or whoever it is in power. Um that's that's the honest truth. One final thing about Clark Martin that I forgot to mention, so. He, you know, he's this um, he's a big time supporter of the Bemores Conservation Society, you know, loves uh. Loves to support them, he's in bed with them, I don't know what's going on, could be an old flame that that, you know, is on the board there, that he 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 once dated in nineteen forty five or something, I'm not sure. But um good old Clarky Martin, he he used to be a um. A diver in the navy, which I come to learn from his very own website, um funnily enough, he used to be a diver in the navy. Um anyhow, he 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 worked on a offshore oil and gas rig as a diver. So I assume he went under and um checked the flows are all good, everything's going well, spot wells, I assume, who knows what he's doing under there. But he was a diver on an offshore oil and gas rig. Um you fast forward twenty thirty years and now he's a green thumb. While Clark Martin, I'd argue this, mate, that um in one day, in one day of Clark Martin's shoes. On a offshore oil and gas rig, Clark Martin has polluted the world. More than I ever will, I think, in my lifetime, more than ever will in my lifetime. Think about that for a second. Now this guy's telling me that, you know, my my home being built, that the Bemores Conservation Society have a point because it's not environmentally friendly. Or not, you know, with the envi- with the with the feel of the environment and the plants and the trees. That's hypocrisy we're dealing with with some of these councillors. And it was all good and well, though, when the when the offshore oil and gas rig was filling your bank account, Clark Martin. But um now it's now it's a problem, right? Now now it's all about the environment. So anyhow, maybe he had a heavy heart and that's why he's changed his his tact. So fun one for for a good old uh Clark Martin. I'm going to go through a few of the excuses and objections we had. Going against our build. There's some fun ones in here, so um get a bag of popcorn. Let's start with the basketball court, I was going to build a essentially a, you know. A third of a basketball court, um not so much a half court, it was a bit under that um in the backyard. Objection, basketball court will make too much noise from ball bouncing. Objection, basketball court will have lights most likely and they will be on all hours of the night. How will we sleep? Oh, you buy you buy some curtains, that'd be a, that'd be number one. Um a certain bird lived lives in our trees that the neighbours' kids love. As they are bird watchers. You read that, you heard that right? Um this one was actually in the formal V cat. Um objections as well by a few names we'll name later on in this podcast. But yeah, there's there's some some kids that um I'm sure with with iPads and everything going on in the world, there's avid bird watching. Six and seven year olds all over Bemores. Um yeah, I I really believe that. Trucks will be in the road during the build. No shit, they're trucks, they're delivering concrete, they're delivering building materials, um like most people, I've lived near builds before. Property in Sydney, I lived in while I played with the Sydney Kings. Soon as we moved in, the house next door got demolished and there was a new build going on. Did we enjoy waking up at six thirty every morning in the hammers and drilling? No, we didn't. That's a part of life, that's just a part of life. We got inconvenienced in our driveway at times. We tried to help as much as we could, um they tried to help um back, they they dirty the side of our house a few times with mud and and whatever and grout. And they came and cleaned it and it was it was fine. Um you have a human interaction and you say, can you please come and just rectify this? And they come and do it and you have no problems. Um that's how society works for for few people um in that part of Bemores that were scared they wouldn't be able to get out of their driveway now. Would you be inconvenienced maybe five minutes every now and then? Probably. But that's the reality of the world we live in. Um there's no other way to build things. So that was that was one. The other one was too much soil removal. Too much soil removal, removing too much dirt. The ecology severely affects that. So that that was one that I that I hadn't heard before, removing soil and dirt. Thought it was the same um soil and dirt you'd have anywhere in. In Victoria, but I guess in Bemores, it's made of gold because it's an affluent area. So the value of that dirt, the elite dirt. Only for the elite, can't remove that. Fence was too high in portions of it, uh fair enough, there were portions of it that were two, two point two metres. Um but the fence, funnily enough, point was proven when um the Conservation Society decided to show up, posted at my house. With news TV cameras recording my house, my home. That is the exact reason why I need a fence, proven by Bemores Conservation Society. So I thought that was pretty funny. The um the basement's gone too low, you don't need ceilings that high in the basement. Um, okay, cool. Let me know how 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 I can put my ceilings in the basement. Um too much planting of non-native plants. So get this, when we knew we were removing um thirty odd percent of tree coverage on the property, some of them were smack bang in the middle of the lot. We had no choice but to move them, we're trying our best to relocate them and and stay away from root zones, but most older trees, they their root zones go all over the place. We're trying our best to keep as many as possible, so we thought, shit, we're moving thirty percent. It's it's not, doesn't sound like a big number to most people, but for Conservation Society. And people that um that love to make love to trees, uh that's a lot. So we go, let's let's double down and try to replant. An obnoxious amount of trees and plants to really show them that we're trying to do the right thing. And I think at one point it was fifty five hundred plants and trees and. A bunch of different species. They pushed back on that because there was there was too much non-native plants that would affect the native plants. I couldn't believe it. I was like. And it was actually good for me because I was like, sweet, I, you know, it's less work for the gardener and landscaper and and old um Daddy Andrew has to has to uh. You know, do the gardening um on those Saturday mornings or Sunday mornings, sweet, I'll put in less, but that that was a pushback. The tree removal was obviously pushed back. This one was a good one, it's going to be an Airbnb holiday rental property slash party house. That was one of them. My family home for my kids and myself was going to be a party house. Um. Yeah, amazing. Color of the bricks, they were doing like a a kind of creamy white type brick. I didn't like that. Um and funnily enough, one of the VK conditions was that I couldn't use those bricks, they have to be closer to all grey, so they've actually got that through. That was one of the sticking points. You can't you can't choose your own colour of bricks in um in Victoria according to VK, so they um they gave them that one. Um some people were saying arches aren't appropriate in Bemores, um because, you know, we like that Bemores modern style, we don't want the arches. Um a few crackers from Clark Martin and then he's going to come up again. Um. Why can't you buy a warehouse for your cars? This was during the councillor, the council meeting, when they were discussing whether they were going to pass. The um planning permit that the Bayside City Council's own planning division had approved and all the pollies knocked back, uh mind you. Pretty much, I think there was one for and the rest were against, um but that doesn't matter, with a token for, I think, in in my opinion. But um. Yeah, I mean, he said, he actually said this, why can't he just buy a warehouse for his cars? I mean. Um I've got a friend that has some classic cars around the corner from me and he's got a warehouse and I had coffee there the other day and it was beautiful. Why can't he do that? Why does he need to do it in Bemores? Because that's what I want to do, mate. I want to I want to have, you know, an underground basement with some car spots. Now, the way they twisted this was a sixteen car garage. How bad does that sound? That sounds bad, I agree. When you look at the plans, it's an eight car space basement garage, um with the option for us to be able to put car lifts in if we want to make it sixteen. But he's spinning this so politically, he doesn't mention the car lifts. What does he need sixteen car spaces for? Well, it's not, it's eight car spaces. Optional, if I want to spend another three or four grand per car lift to double my space, that's my prerogative. But there there's a little little white line, um Clark Martin told, you know, sixteen car spaces, not the case. Um what else do we have? We have good old Clark Martin again. Does Andrew Bogut really need eight theatre seats or twelve theatre seats in his home theatre in the basement? Why can't he have four? Why can't he have four? This is a direct quote from this banana. This is a councillor dictating your life in 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 Bayside City Council who's now going to run. In the Victorian election I'm hearing, um which would be comical in itself, I don't know who he's going to run with, but he'd fit in very well with Dan, the man, he'd fit in perfectly, mate. Can't recall the tough questions, he's in bed with the greenies, gets those um independent votes, starting his political career off perfectly, Clark Martin, you're done well. Anyhow, enough of that. Let's go on to rates. Get some digging. By their twenty twenty one, twenty two budget, the Bayside City Council, hundred and fifty six point nine million dollar budget. They're saying they'll deliver on a bunch of bunch of bunch of blah, 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 blah. One point five percent rate increase. It's in it's in accordance with the Victorian Government's rate cap, according to them. Their decision to increase increase rates was not taken lightly. However, this revenue is essential for council's continued investment in community infrastructure. And to provide services for our community. Um the budget reflects blah, blah, blah. I love this one. Council's role is not simply to pick up rubbish, repair roads and charge rates. Although those are important elements in brackets, our role today is defined by the Local Government Act in two thousand twenty. Is to provide good governance for the benefit and wellbeing of the municipal community. This budget is intended to do exactly that. I commend the proposed twenty one, twenty two Bayside City Council budget to our community, that's Mayor Lawrence Owens. Actually councils your main ninety nine percent of your role to pick up our rubbish in timely manner, repair the roads and footpaths. Um build some kids facilities and playgrounds. And otherwise, I really don't want to hear from you, to be quite honest, um regardless if I'm building or not. I I really think you have no other worth other than those three things. Um but the reason why I bring up the budget, I think that number's understated. I think they've got more in their pot than a hundred and fifty six point nine million. And I will explain. Um there's seventy thousand dwellings, roughly speaking, in Bayside City Council. By rough math, um seventy thousand times. I would say, I I look, I own a townhouse in Bemores, um which is on the lower end of a rate statement. And I own a higher end property which is at the high end of a rate statement. Now, the further you get to the city, the more affluent the suburbs are, the further away. Prices go down. So on average, I said, look, three to three and a half thousand dollars would be what people are paying for rates on average, I reckon, in Bayside City Council for. A normal sized property. Now, there's there's bigger ones that are paying eight, nine, and there's smaller ones that are probably paying, you know, eighteen hundred, two grand. But on average, thirty five hundred was the number I just picked out from the sky on average, right? That's two hundred and forty five million, two hundred and forty five million, or in layman's terms, a quarter of a billion dollars. That the Bayside City Council, I believe, is getting. Let's factor in parking fines, let's factor in permit costs, let's factor in building permits, um fines for removing one of your trees. Um you know, these are small fines, thousands and thousands of dollars, so they'd make some more money there, but let's just call it a quarter of a billion dollars. The reason why I bring this up is the Bayside City Council had budgeted one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To fight yours truly at VK. That's coming from all you um Bayside City Council ratepayers. Thank you very much. You just, you you fought a fight that was, you know, from what I understand, was not a a favorable fight, and I'll get to that later. Um but you you fought a a fight just just basically pissing money up the tree, so much so that, you know, this was set off record. Um you know, lawyers um that represent Bayside City Council, my lawyers, you know, experts, barristers. They're all friends, they're all friends with each other. It is what it is. Um so much so that the the Bayside City Council. Someone from their representation team had made a comment to ours saying, man, you always, you always get the the easier cases. You always get the um cut and dry cases that are going to be hard for us to win. This was before, much before. This is their own representation saying this. So they they knew they were going into into a qualified that was just done because the Bemores Conservation Society was having a cry. And a lot of the councillors are for some reason in bed with them. And it was a a win, a win-win for a councillor like Clark Martin. Because at the end of the day, you can say, oh, we lost the core case, that greedy basketballer, his his development's just got over the line, he's got too much money. But I tried for you, Bemores Conservation Society, I really tried to stop this development, you know, um. That's one side of the of of the fence for uh old Clark Martin. The other side is that they win the case, I did it for the people, see, we we need to stop these developers. And we did, we've set precedence here in Bemores and Baysides. It was win-win for him. And that's how most of these people work. They 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 toe that line in the middle. Um and Clark Martin, unlucky, you were on the side of 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 just basically lighting on fire. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars of your ratepayers' money that you're responsible for directly. You're one of the councillors that um denied the permit initially. So well done there, mate. But yeah, let's um just remember when you're paying your rates next time. That once, once you hear these developments that are are being fought by council and these fringe groups, Bemores Modern and Conservation Society, that's coming out of your rates. That could be going to a kids park, I much rather would have donated that a hundred and fifty odd thousand dollars. Um actually, I spent more fighting. Um but let's say a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this this topic of this conversation, I would much rather donate it out to, you know, a local kids park. Building a new basketball court, um whatever it is, you know, building something for children in our community, I would much, something charitable, whatever. Would have been more than happy to do that. Um but the fact that it was just lit on fire for no reason, um and is 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 disappointing. All right, here we go, here we go. I'm going to make a few names famous. I've worked, um so I get all the access to all the names that objected. All the names that um were for my project. By the way, thank you to all the people that that wrote in. There were a heavier number of people that were for. Uh my build and project going ahead than there were against. Unfortunately, you know, the way this all works is um. These these groups like the Bemores Combat Conservation Society know how to string this out and and lodge the right paperwork to continue this all going on. As soon as you get any objectors. Whether there be three or four objectors and a million four, um they'll always, you know, dig further and and. You'll have to go through a process that I went through, which is just bonkers in its own right. But um I want to make some of these people famous because. What a lot of these people have done is is basically cut and paste the same statement that the Bemores Conservation Society has put together for them. This is what they do. Mind you, um pre this all, you know, going to to court and 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 all that, there were um. There was mediation done, uh which was, you know, by law has to be done, which was by myself, uh my representatives, barristers, lawyers. Experts, um their side and um a mediator, this has to be done obviously, so they don't, if they don't have to have things go to court, they generally don't want to. So and waste the court's time, the judge's time, so they will um try to get a result. I I remember sitting in the meeting and. I I didn't make, I don't make comment, it's for my legal team and I was I was so close to muting the microphone and going at some people, it was just crazy. But just quickly, the reason why it fell over from their point of view was they had an old, an old crusty bloke that um, you know, very, very old. And I pushing three did it's almost that um from the Bemores Conservation Society, that just would not, would not reneg. Or to or give up on his stance of there should be no basement in his part of Bemores. Should not be a basement, should not be a basement, should not be a basement. And it got to the point where even the people could see. Um because it was via Zoom, that even the conservation people were like, dude, like, let that one go, we're we're getting, you know, we need X, Y and Z for this to go ahead. And and looks like Andrew's given us maybe X and a bit of Y, like it's getting there. This old bloke would just not budge. So I got to the point where the mediator was like, old old fellow, like, are you, are you saying this is a line in the sand for the basement? And he's like, yeah, um there's. are you saying this is a line in the sand for the basement? And he's like, yeah, uh, uh, there's no way I can agree to a basement. Alright, meeting over, everyone, see you later. All the other conservation people were like, man, what, what did you do? Um so it was pretty funny about that old fellow and it saved me a bit of time. So anyway, we did that. Um so the reason why I'm gonna name all these people is because my address was printed in the newspaper when, when they all showed up, um tear-jerked at um the front of my property with TV cameras. My name, my name and address got printed in the Herald Sun. Um I looked into legal advice to try and um, you know, go after them for that because I thought it was bush league and low. Um I'm gonna be honest, look, I'm, I'm, I'm a controversial fella. I um, I'm happy to speak out on stuff. I have people that really support that and I have people that hate that. The last thing I want is for people to know my address where my wife and two kids have nothing to do with my, my controversial opinions at times or my heated battles online or whatever I'm talking about, they have nothing to do with that. And for them to be affected is absolutely poor form. So the Herald Sun printing that was bad. I, I looked into some legal advice. Um I actually got word back that, cause it's lodged publicly by the Baside City Council, so. Which this law is all, this is also changed. Um coincidentally, right after I, I lodged my, my papers, that um whenever you lodge a bill and your name and address is printed, um or not printed, is, is put on the council website as part of the plans. That has now changed. They do not put the person's name and address. So anyhow, at, at the time it was, so then these people, obviously, um you know, leaked it from the Conservation Society and then the Herald Sun can just hide behind the fact that like, well, it's publicly accessible on Baside City Council's website. Anyone that's been on a council website, if it works at all, those things are, are, are useless. They are useless. Like, it's useless to watch, right, telling the time. You go on them, they crash, they freeze, nothing ever works. To find one document, you, you're clicking fifteen different links. So most people would never have known my address. Um but anyway, the Herald Sun printed it, thought that was a good idea. So that, that really pissed me off. Um and that's the main reason why I'm gonna read some of these names out and I've got a few um that um I'm, I'm really gonna get into uh that should be good fun. So let's start, Mr. N McKenna, objection. Barbara Cheneki, objection. Nina Vucic, objection. Disappointing, a fellow Balkan. You know, with an objection. Sue Raverty, um Beaumoris Conservation Society lodged an objection as a whole. Well done. Even though all, most of these people I'm reading are, are involved with that group. Tisha Haggard, Tisha, we'll get into you a little bit later. Sally Parsons, Carly Fraser, another name you'll hear again shortly. Diana Dugan, Mrs. S Ray, Mr. K Frank, Mr. R McDonald, Mrs. J Cavanagh. Geez, a lot of, a lot of quote unquote English uh names on this from the old, the old Queens, England. Right? You know, um elitists. Mrs. K Walbrink, uh Mr. Mr. C Green. Mister S Walbrink, so husband and wife live in the same house, lodged individual permits, individual objections, sorry. Interesting in itself. Mister M Stroh, Mister B Kiefer. Geez, we're having ethnic names, just besides Vucic, geez, we're struggling, aren't we? Um council's all about equality in these conservation societies. Mister W Gleadwell, Mister J Patterson, Mister B Bowden, Miss A Price. Miss J Colwill, Caroline Lawton, mind you, business partner of Tisha Haggard. Doctor Jeremy Stone, Joy Taylor, Melanie Fox. And we had a, a fellow named JJ from Beaumoris Modern. Of course, they're in cahoots with the Conservation Society. So that's the list of names that we have. Uh there were many more. So what happens in the initial objections when people could just write in and be Karen and be like, I don't like this about Bogut's house. There were, there were, there were more objections, but once it had to go formal and they have to pay to lodge a fee, that, that, that kind of um has a lot of people disappear because they don't want to put into their own pocket to, to lodge their carrying thoughts. But um that was a, a list of names of people and yeah, like I said, not a lot of um diversity in those names, but story for another day. Let's get into our friend, Tisha Haggard now. Tisha, Tisha, Tisha. Tisha was on the calls when I um was speaking with the Beaumoris Conservation Society. Um she was on the call with a few other people from, from representing them. So how would I describe Tisha? So I think Bart Simpson haircut um type lady. So that's, that's just an appearance um of, of what I, what I thought she looked like and um just to give you a feel, so you can put it in your head. And she was, was basically pretty aggressive and direct with what she thought I should do with my house when she was talking to me during that call. Um now during that call, I expressed that, look, I don't, I, I, I'm doing this call out of my goodwill. I want to engage with you and, and really hear what, what the issues are, what's, what's the concerns, how can we find some common ground? The last thing I want to do is move to that part of um, you know, Victoria and Beaumoris and, and bring a bulldozer through and clear everything. I wouldn't have bought in this area for that. You know, we really appreciated some of the trees, but some of the trees, you can't build a house. You, you literally can't build a house because they're smack bang in the middle of the yard or their roots are. So anyhow, she was pretty, pretty firm and aggressive with the way she addressed me on that call. Um so look, I, I, I did want to do a bit of digging and just see what she does and what do you do for a quid? Um you know, I'm, I'm sure you're doing something that's great for the environment. So find out she's a business partner of um Caroline Lawton, who is um, they're both with the Beaumoris Conservation Society and they both, they run a, an interior design company called Six Pieces Interior Design. So what I found intriguing about this was, I, I was wondering, shit, what's their, what's their furniture made out of? It must be made out of some, something that's recycled um dirt or, or leaves or, you know, something like that, right? It can't, can't be made out of wood, surely not. Like, that'd be hypocritical, right? I can't, I can't remove some trees and, and they're selling and furnishing homes with, with wooden items. But yeah, you guessed it. Um you look at all their, all their projects, just full of wood, full of wood. Love, they love the trees, they love things made of wood. So I, I call that a hypocrite. I don't care what you tell me. Um there'll be people that'll say, well, they need to make a living. Well, I need to build a house. That's my excuse. So yeah, don't, don't, Andrew, don't cut down trees in, in my, you know, NIMBY, not in my backyard, not, not near where I live. Don't cut down those trees. But I need that little um dining table and that wood finish, that's beautiful. Where are you getting the trees from? As long as they're not from Beaumoris. Ah mate, cut down as many as you want, by all means. Tisha Haggard, by all means. So well done on that one, a bit hypocrisy there. So if you want to check that, that um, that place out, I'll give it a shout out again. Um it is uh very, very nice. Got some nice, nice things on there. Six pieces interior design. So give them a call. Let them know what you think of um, of them using wood in their interior design. I mean, that says here, they've got the typical job cost between five hundred dollars and three million. Geez, three million dollars worth of wooden furniture. Woo. So that's a lot of trees you're killing, Tisha. How do you, how do you sleep at night? Alright, so Tisha also, funnily enough, has a very nice property out in Red Hill South, which I've come across. Stones Throw, Red Hill South. If you want to check it out online, you Google Stones Throw in Red Hill South. Comes up. Now, for those not familiar, Red Hill South, Red Hill in general, the Mornington Peninsula. Very, you know, heavy with trees back in the day. So she's obviously purchased a house that someone has had to clear a shitload of trees to build this, this home. It looks like a very beautiful home. It's a thousand and fifty two dollars a night. So Tisha Haggard has a nice dwelling there in, in Red Hill South that had a lot of trees removed to have, have its structure put up, I assume. Uh runs an interior design company that's full of furniture made of wood. But Andrew Bogut, mate, don't, don't you dare remove some trees to build your home. So bit of hypocrisy there, I think. You know, a little petty by boggs, you think? I don't know. I don't, I don't think so. Um I think it's um par for course, right? Speaking of uh, of par for course, this one is a beauty. We got Carly Fraser, who was in the, the mediation meeting, I believe. Uh before we went to court, I'm, I'm representing the Beaumoris Conservation Society or whoever she was representing. What was funny about this one was while I was live on that call, obviously my counsel and my team representing me, uh we, we had a little group chat in there and, and someone in that group had, when, when Carly Fraser was going on a little tangent about, you know, why I shouldn't um build this property and blah, blah, blah. Find out she lives around the corner from the property I was trying to build at. And they sent me um a drone or satellite shot over a property and said, the hypocrisy of this lady railing us about putting in more trees and more greenery and sent the photo of, of, of her from her house from above. Mate, it's, there's not a tree in sight. It's almost like there was a windy storm one night and all the trees fell over and all this concrete fell out of the sky. Um and just happened to go onto her property. So found that one interesting. But what's more interesting about good old Carly Fraser is her husband, Marcus Fraser. Now, Marcus is a, is a, you know, Olympian, I believe, and a professional sportsman. What sport do you think Marcus plays? It is a sport that, I guess, is, is for the elite, not basketball. It's not uh, not tennis. It is a sport that probably needs, removes the most trees at any sport in the world, I, I believe. Um could be wrong. Yes, you're correct, he pla, he plays golf. Now, I believe a lot of these golf courses, some of them are the most prestigious parts of numerous cities and counties and countries all, all around the world, you know. Beautiful fairways, nice green grass that was full of trees one day. So you've built, and I'm not judging golfers. I've got no problem with any of this. I'm just stating the hypocrisy of, of Miss Carly Fraser. Your husband plays golf. It's perfectly okay to clear a shitload of trees for him to make his par four, right? That's all okay, all okay. So just giving you another example of, of hypocrisy that um good old Carly Fraser forgot. So listen, Carly, have a conversation with your husband. Say, look, look, Marcus, do you really need to get, need to play those eighteen holes? You know, there, there's, there's, those golf courses are notorious for removing a mass amount of trees. All for a little white ball to go up and down a fairway into a hole. You need to have that conversation, Carly, with good old Marcus at dinner and let me know what he tells you. So I'd like to welcome right now, we have a local resident from, from the Baside uh City Council in um Frank from Brighton. Welcome to Rogue Boggs.
Thank you.
So I really wanted to get you on. We're getting a few different people in the area. You know, I, I had many people reach out to me and um we want to just hear your stories. And you have a pretty unique and, and somewhat sickening um story. You, you're a homeowner in, in Brighton since two thousand and eleven. Take me through what happened to you.
Uh so we, we'd um bought the property in two thousand and eleven. Um we uh did our due diligence. Um and got our uh lawyer to check if there was any heritage um issues associated with property. Uh he referenced us to the two thousand and four panel report and assured us that we had no issues. Uh in reading that report, um our property um uh had been individually referenced. Um and was um uh undertaken by, that, that the panel consisted of four heritage experts that came to the conclusion that the uh craftsman type style house was on its last legs and not worth retaining. Seven years or eight years down the track, um we put in, um you know, we saved up as a family unit uh and wanted to uh, you know, redevelop the property. Um so we, we um engaged, um uh our neighbour gave her a heads up and she was fully supportive of the process. Um and then when the building, w- once the um permit was advertised, the, or the building plan was advertised, we, we got objections. And the objectors um were primarily uh several houses down. Um and it also involved the Beaumoris Modern and the National Trust. And, you know, we viewed them as professional uh antagonists. So they kicked off the process by nominating our house at state level heritage. So we had to fight that process um because that was also challenged. And what, and the reason they, they kick off that process is when the uh Heritage Council um say that the path is of no state level heritage. They put in the line item that says the house may have local level significance. The um, you know, uh Fiona Austin, National Trust and, and one of the uh ladies down the street attended a, a council meeting uh and put it on the agenda and argued for the case for the house to be assessed at local level. And the council kicked off that process without engaging us or involving us or giving us an opportunity to, to put our case forward. The only time they did engage us was um essentially just to meet us and say that they've already kicked off the process and can't go back on it. Um so look, I, I was at tears, in tears during the meeting.
So was that just a matter of, of, of you receiving a letter in the mail, a phone call, or was it them showing up in front of the house, you know?
Oh, sorry, um Andrew, Frank just started crying again. Um so we just might stop this cause it just really stresses him. Like he's, it's like this has been over a year now and he's still in tears. Like we've had council meetings and I'm the one that doesn't cry. That's not criticism, but it, it's just, it still affects him now when he talks about it.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't realise it was, it was still um.
No, I.
Yeah, I apologize.
No, you didn't. I need you to apologize. You weren't the one that did it. Um yeah.
I mean, I mean, to be honest, this is exactly what people need to hear. I mean, this, these aren't, these aren't um decisions that um are just to affect someone with a big bank account like myself or, you know, a, a factor. A person that can just go and buy another block of land down the street or, you know, in a better area. This, this affects everyday people. This is the exact reason why um.
Yeah, they just, they just don't think, I think anyone um that hears Brighton thinks, oh, you're all cashed up. I mean, you know, we've come from migrant backgrounds, our parents are what, you know, blue collar workers. Um Frank and I have saved up. We unfortunately don't have great parents that are just handing out lots of cash.
Not, no cash in the boot of the car?
No, unfortunately not. I mean, but you know, during the process, uh we were accused of being drug lords.
Really? On rec, on, on record, on record?
On record, yes.
Well, that, that's the thing, that I'm sure there's a few good eggs in that bunch. I, I'm yet to find one, but they, you know, the tactics of intimidation, the tactics of, of firing up um even moderate people, um that's the, you know, example I had was there. They were door knocking neighbours around my area trying to scare them into, into signing a, an objection and saying, you know, this is gonna affect X, Y, Z. And most people were like, in the middle, like, I, I don't know too much about it, but I think it's a good thing, I don't know. And they'd sway those people by intimidating them by, you know, and, and I think that's, it sounds like your experience that um, you know, they can kind of manipulate minds. But um just, Frank's alright to talk again or if you can continue to go on. So, so when you speak, when you talk about um the renovation, was that a demo rebuild or a reno of existing?
Yeah, so we, we're gonna demolish it and, and put in two townhouses. And those townhouses were um within resco. Um I mean, we're on a thousand meter block. Um if you drive up our street, there was, there's a lot of diversity in, in, in the street. You know, there's some old heritage buildings. Um there's a, you know, a Tudor style, uh, uh, there's also mixed, but there's also a lot of modern houses. So we weren't, yeah, uh, uh, yeah, flat. Um uh so we weren't proposing anything. Um it, well, we didn't think it was controversial. Um you know, uh the, you know, just like yourself, the, the planning type group in, in the council offices um were supportive of it. Um but, you know, the, the, the councillors um just, it just felt like the bulk of them were anti-development. Um I must, you know, I should recognise that Del Porto and Castelli were, were very supportive of it. And Del Porto, um Council of Del Porto certainly spent some time putting in logical evidence-based arguments in our support. Um whereas um uh, again, Clark Martin just didn't want to hear it. Just said, you're bad luck. Um just did not have any empathy at all. Um so that was the only council meeting we attended. And following that, we had to, you know, we, we fought a, a state level hearing uh which involved barristers and lawyers. Uh we won that. Um we then um had to sign a, a, a VCAT process. Um we lost that. Uh and then we um, um had to, um you know, uh do the local level heritage panel hearing uh and we lost that.
Wow, okay. And ju- just quickly, obviously when you bought the premises in two thousand and eleven, like most Australian families, you kind of, location was important, you know, Brighton's a beautiful area, um near the water. I assume you bought that, we're gonna live in it for a while and then one day we'll renovate it, right?
Uh correct, yes. We, this wasn't the house we wanted to live in forever.
Yep. And you did all your due diligence, as you said. You've instructed lawyers to find out about overlays and whether that could be done. You got all the right answers. Um you circle back to two thousand and four when it was on, um up for discussion for heritage. It wasn't, the box wasn't ticked, so beautiful, you know. Seven, eight years later now, you've, you've obviously saved up some hard, hard earned money to, to, to. Seven, eight years later now, you've you've obviously saved up some hard wo- hard earned money to 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 build your dream um home and and you run into, you run into this. Um talk us through, uh obviously, the stress was was one thing, as we can hear, like in your voice and and obviously, you know, um it's still an emotional thing to talk about, but even just the amount of money to front up at the local and state level. Talk about that.
Uh so for the uh state level hearing, we we had to hire the the barrister and um a heritage expert and the lawyer. I'm gonna lump up all the costs together. I'll tell you, they did their hearings.
Yep.
At the VCAT hearing, we we had a barrister. We couldn't find a heritage expert that would support us. And uh we engaged uh structural subject matter experts as well because um you know, that we used them and what they identified is, you know, for example, the chimney's leaning out or cracking. Okay, like the leaning tower teaser.
Yep.
The bricks used for the chimney are a second from the kiln and they degrade over time, but they're not designed for a hundred years. Um so the house just isn't designed to 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 go on beyond beyond a hundred years. So we argued all those points and that, you know, unless the house is completely fallen down, you you know, you've got a tough arse.
Yeah, until a brick hits you kid in the head or or yourself.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Um uh and 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 then um we just used the lawyers during the panel hearing. So we we, as a family unit, we comfortably spent close to hu- two hundred thousand dollars.
Oh my goodness. Yeah, that's that's uh whoa. Um I I didn't think we'd go that high. I thought I thought I was a rare egg spending what I spent, but that's it almost to me.
So we we had to uh radically um change. Um you know, what we did, so uh we had our plan to send our son to to private schooling. Um you know, we 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 could decide to go to public schooling system. Um my wife worked extra hours, you know, extra days of work. Um so it was certainly a significant stress on the family. To other Bomoros residents, people don't understand the uh implications associated with heritage. For example, we we made an inquiry to change our gate. And councillor said, well, it's a heritage property now, the the fee um is an additional ten percent. Okay, you need to engage a heritage expert.
Yeah.
Just to get approved to change the gate. So people don't understand the owners that get put onto the, an owner with with um that's gotten the heritage. And the whole heritage process is set up to pick off individuals. Uh because we didn't have a large network in Brighton. Okay, um we we were fortunate enough to to do some door knocking, uh which, you know. And we 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 were very thankful and pleased to know that the majority of the people in our street, although it's a heritage precinct street, supported us.
Yep.
And that majority state, you know, we pushed that point at the council meeting, but they ignored it.
Yeah, yeah. And look, tho- those groups have massive presence online. They have a couple of thousand, if not more, in their, you know, Facebook groups and whatnot. They can mobilise pretty quickly. Um as I, as I saw, I'm not sure if you saw the footage at my place, but they they had about fifty of them show up um when the plans got announced with TV crews and it was on the news and they were, you know.
Network in the papers.
Exactly right. And they can, they can dictate terms and 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 PR of how, look at this greedy developer, is is the developer or they're drug dealers or that 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 rich basketball player, just, you know, disrespectful of the area. And they can kind of narrate your image without you even having a say. And I have a voice, I'm lucky. So I could, I could punch back somewhat. But for everyday people like yourself, you're kind of, you're kind of stuck in a bad place.
Yeah, professional agitators and yeah, we just didn't have that large network to 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 put in large numbers to to any commission that were put forward to cancel.
Yeah, and I guess the irony in all of this is the two hundred K you spent. The money used to fight you was my rates, your rates and every Bayside residence's rates. And
Correct.
We know for a fact that this is a minority group. You give them credit because they're well organised and mobilised, but they're the minority. Um the majority of residents in all council, this isn't just Bayside, this is what I'm coming to realise, Bayside is one of the worst. But the majority of residents don't like these groups, they don't like these people, but they keep quiet for the very reason of, I don't want these nutters on my doorstep. And that's the fight that everyone needs to fight. We we we. Yeah, we need to come somehow come together. I'm not sure what the solutions are, but it's it's, to me, it's almost a Ponzi scheme, this whole thing, because I can tell you the barristers all know each other. So the barristers that represent the council want to on one case and 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 someone represents, you know, the the person with the building permit, th- they have drinks at the end of the night and laugh about the case. For example, the councillor that was representing the council had actually told some people in the know that, oh, you've, you know, you've given, I've I've got the shit end of this stick for this case, and they laughed it off. Whereas I'm spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, the taxpayer and the rate payer is spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. Someone like yourself, you know, not being able to put your children now in a private school at the detriment of of what these people are doing, and they do it with a smile on their face. That's that's the smugness and elitism of those groups in these areas. Where I could understand if you were trying to put a six, six floor apartment building up or something that completely doesn't fit the rest of the houses, it's it sticks out like crazy. And I would still argue, probably you bought that land, you should be allowed to do it to an extent. But you I understand making things fit in nicely, I I get that. But when it's just someone trying to, you know, renovate um an existing house, so that's their dream home. It just makes you, it makes you sick to your stomach and it sounds like.
Got no vested interest at all, whereas those individuals, the the homeowner suffers a lot.
Yeah, they should be made, if, this is my thing, it should not be funded by council funds. If you Bomoros Modern, the Conservation Society, you want to fight it, fundraise within your own group. Um and and fund, they should not come from council funds. And this is where Clark Martin comes in. This is a gentleman that that I've had a run in with numerous times and and he's pushing this and um as I've mentioned on my podcast, this, you know, Clark Martin's all about sustainability and being green these days. I'm not sure if you know what his former job was.
No.
He he uh worked on an oil rig, believe it or not. So one of his previous jobs was a diver on a oil and gas offshore rig. So I would argue that um what he's done in one day of his uh previous job is the equivalent of what I'd do in my, in a lifetime when it comes to damage for the environment. And that's the hypocrisy with these people. Um
That's right.
It's just, it's downright embarrassing, but I guess to round this up, I don't want to hold you too long. Wh- wh- where are you at now? Are you still living, you're still living in the house? What? I mean, I I you, you know, obviously sound, you know, pretty defeated with this whole process. What's, what's next?
Uh we're, we'll stay here. Um you know, the location's quite good. Uh we're in no rush to to move at all. Um and uh we'll we'll certainly just focus on on ensuring a a safe and um uh you know, schooling for our kids in the short term.
Hmm. But you can't, obviously, the end result is you can't really do much work on that home or afford to, right?
No, you know, we we considered, we thought about, we we, so as part of the process, just to rectify the house, this is not a renovation, will cost us in excess of seven hundred thousand dollars.
Yep, mm-hmm.
Okay. So we need to pay up for our retirement and spending money on the house is not, we 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 just can't afford to do that.
Yeah, after the, after the, the right time to do it was taken away from you. Essentially, your legs were cut out from under you, from from some people who you know, um it'd be nice if you, if we had council money to defend ourselves as much as um, you know, I think it'd be a different ballgame then and we'd see a lot less cases and and a lot less people, but um look.
I've certainly been a, you know, more, more um uh I'm keeping an eye out on on what council puts up. Uh and you know, I'm gonna support um the people that uh are are being taken advantage of. Um and there's a, you know, I think the new heritage processes that council's kicking off on the mid-century houses, I don't support. And and we're, we're, we're supporting that, those group of individuals uh through that stressful process from themselves. So um, you know, thank you for reaching out, Andrew, and and having a chat up and supporting us to a point. Um but and we're, 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 you know, prepared to reciprocate that in other areas of our community.
Yeah, appreciate, we appreciate the time Irene as well, um your wife. Thank you uh for setting this up. I think it's a you know, it's better to hear it from the horse's mouth rather than me saying, I heard this, I want to get a few people on, you won't be the only ones on. Yeah, look, there's, there's many stories, there's a few other people coming on, there's um, we'll wrap this up. So thank you for joining us.
Thank you. All the best to you.
And just a small note to round off that interview. The lady that you heard speaking, her name was Irene. Irene is Frank's wife and obviously joined the interview when you know, it was a little hard for Frank to um, you know, get across what he wanted to get across, a little bit emotional. So just wanted to make sure that we um we stated who the other guest was on that interview. Thanks. I'll go and welcome another guest. We have um John Lyons who um reached out and said he'd love to have a conversation about Bayside City Council and and different things over the years. He's been a Bayside um council resident um for twenty five odd years, mainly in Sandringham, was in Cheltenham before that. So he's been, you know, a good part of three odd decades in in Bayside. So welcome to Rogue Bogues, John.
Uh thanks very much, Andrew. Uh it's, by the way, I can take this opportunity just to say, it's a pleasure to speak to to a young fellow like yourself. Uh I suppose the the achievement to play world-class basketball at the highest level would be a pretty rare sort of feat feat uh feat for a young Aussie, uh you know, a young Aussie fellow. Would that be the case? I don't, I'm not really a big basketball fan.
Uh when I started, it was, but it's become, it's become much more uh a much greater pipeline now. So we've we've definitely got a lot more Aussies going over there, but when when I started and even even before me, Luke Longley was really the only guy that stuck. So um we're we're batting above average here in Australia, which is great.
Yeah, it sure was. So yeah, good stuff. But uh anyway, back to uh back to uh our Bayside Council scenario, mate. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, you've been in the area for a long time. You reached out.
Yeah, I I have, Andrew, and uh you know, I've, I've been just a a normal rate payer over the years, like most people. We just pay our rates and think that you know, uh the people who are governing us are doing the right thing. And and when you get closer to the, to the coalface, you get to understand that there's a lot of skullduggery goes on and a lot of stuff that people don't realise. The 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 hard-earned dollars are just absolutely squandered away by people who are, who seem to take charge, take control and are there for year after year after year and use um council not only as a um uh you know, a place to run, run sort of city council, but for launching pads into uh, you know, uh state parliament and different places like that. So uh there's some big egos involved in this, in this um, in this field and uh and a lot of wastage, unfortunately.
Yeah, with with that, with our own money, um usually, usually fighting us and and one of those people that you, that you mentioned that will be using this as a stepping pad, I I believe I've just learnt that Clark Martin will will be trying to run for for state parliament, um which is
Yep.
Um he definitely fits the bill, especially with the current, current party. I think he'd he'd fit in very, very well there.
Yeah, he he'd be, he'd be a shoe-in for sure, yeah.
Fits, fits all the bills, ticks all the boxes for that group, that's for sure. Um especially with all the IBAC cases going on, really fit in well. But look, take, take me through some examples of of dealings that you've had, not only with the council, but, you know, Conservation Society, Bomoros, Bomoros Modern. I think you got some examples of around, which we'll get to a little bit later, but I mean, you've been in the area long enough to remember, you know, contamin- some contaminated land that has been converted, that's gone back and forth with the, with the golf course there. So take us through all that and and how your dealings with council, yeah.
Yeah, it it's very, very chequered to say the least. So um and I must, I must stress that most of these, these council people, they try to 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 sort of get stuff a- a- and wash stuff through without the general populace knowing what's going on. And 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 that's the idea to get it, um these things knocked over us quickly. But they ran into us. Um uh myself and uh my friend Michelle around the corner, we instigated the whole um uh protest against a a a netball complex that was planned for the Sandringham Golf Driving Range. Now, Andrew, I must stress here that I love junior sport, I've coached junior football. And um the last thing I would begrudge were were kids uh playing sport. But what had happened is the driving range was a focal point. Um but I might, if if I can go back a a few steps.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
When I first moved into the area where I, where I'm speaking to you from now. Um this was a whole new development and I didn't know really the full, the full details of it, but um that's fine. I was happy about the the nice area that I had. I was surrounded by parks. Um uh and and then I learned that um down the track, that a few years later, through the, through the research, uh this beautiful domain that we live used to be the area of the, of a big factory, Dunlop factory, where they've they made lead-filled acid batteries. Batteries are like in those days. And what they used to do, they used to dump all the stuff, which is, which which is now the the golf driving range. And that used to be the local municipal tip. Uh the tip's now been transferred to Chilip Street, but it was a tip for a long, long time. So uh the whole area was 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 filled with absolute terrible sort of pollutants. Um not even, and to make it worse, the area where where I live was apparently infested with a voracious ad. I I uh and this ad was an absolute pest. So they sprayed the land with Agent Orange.
Oh, wow.
And the Agent, Agent Orange, Agent Orange drums were dumped in the same tip. So um they filled up the tip without it, with with very few people knowing, you know, that, you know, in the area of the history of the site. Uh covered it over and turned it into a golf driving range. Then they refilled the area where where our houses and the and the factories were, and they've built this beautiful housing estate. So we're um, we're, we're sort of buying along nicely and sort of enjoying life. And unfortunately, a few people are getting sick as well. And I, I contracted a uh to uh debilitating and a terminal autoimmune disease called weakness granulomatosis. Um I'm not saying that's because of the area, but you know, there's a coincidence and the lady around the corners um also got um a very serious illness. And there are many people in the area who have got illnesses. But that actual topic hasn't been brought up is up to uh to councillors yet, but I think it will, it will be sort of maybe covered down the track. But anyway, so they decided to build um wh- so when, 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 when Mr Bruce Green from Royal Melbourne uh developed the Sandringham Driving Range and he filled it in in the tip, uh he built a driving range there. It was a focal point for everybody in the area. And there were many satellite sort of um businesses. There was a, a club fitting business, there was restaurants, there was um uh sports promotion businesses and and five or six golf coaches. It was a real hub of activity. Uh uh Mr, Mr Green sold um a part of the business to some, some partners. And they continued on and, you know, everything was fine. They were all sort of enjoying life. And shortly after the new owners s- signed a a new um new extension on the, on, I'm not sure if it was a ten-year lease, but it was a long lease. Bayside Council decided to terminate the lease and say they wanted the land back to build a netball complex. And a massive payout was paid out to uh to the owners of the golf driving range, which is undisclosed, Andrew, so we don't know how much was spent.
In the millions, obviously.
Yeah, heaps. And this is about, and the other businesses, they went, I'm not sure if they got payouts either, but uh as well. But um anyway, uh that just, just apparently, they just didn't want to let what we sort of peasants know, what what sort of money they were spending of ours to pay out these, these people who just resigned a new lease, which was unbelievable. But so um that, that was uh the way it was. And we, we decided, um you know, I decided along with a couple of other people, this just wasn't good enough. So we, we approached council and and Andrew, I must reiterate, the size of um the um they're gonna have sixteen netball court, net courts and a um and and a, you know, a football ground on this locale, um where there's just no car parking whatsoever. And 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 we're surrounded by dead-end streets and you probably know the area and there's very little sort of through traffic. So how the, the traffic's gonna cope is a, is a mystery. So we uh, we went to the EPA and the EPA, they were alarmed about what I told them and they did their investigations. Now, four years later, they're still doing investigations on the land. But Bayside Council decided in their wisdom, they would secretly do a deal with the Sandringham College and the uh uh junior and senior colleges. with the Sandringham College and the, uh, junior and senior colleges and take over their land and build a netball complex on their land and use the golf driving range. It was a thriving sort of hive of, of business and enterprise and turn it into a car park. So it's just, it's just, it's mind-bending, the sort of wastage and sort of incompetence and stupidity of this, this organisation, uh, of Bayside Council. And as a result, um, not only did it get, they got more people out of joint because the people down in Holloway Road, who have got a dead-end road that their school is, is in and, and they've got no access out of the place. They're going to have this huge complex along with a football ground at this locale. Um, and it's costing millions and millions of dollars that we know that, how, we, we know not how much. So it's just bizarre. It really is.
Yeah, it's, it's very bizarre, especially considering that, you know, my example would be building, I'm trying to build a, you know, I was trying to build a dream home and um, something for myself and my family and had to jump through a million hoops and speak to, you know, conservation groups and meetings and, um, you know, try to, I guess, try to barter some deals. All right, we'll put this many trees if we take this many away, blah, 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 blah. But when the council's involved, they can just acquire land and put a, put a netball centre, um, at the end of a street. And this, you know, they've spun this, the councils actually spun it that, you know, the, the people complaining are just anti-kids sport. They hate life. They hate kids. And it doesn't seem like that's the case because I've spoken to a few people about this issue and yourself. And it's people that are just concerned about where's the parking going to be? Where, how's, what's the road access in and out on a quiet street? And I get all that. And that's, that's, you know, the fact that I can only compare it to myself. I'm trying to build a house at the end of a street with no through traffic, which wouldn't really be an issue. My inconvenience, two of my neighbours, one of which is perfectly fine with. And that got so much pushback, but you go to the equivalent of a sixteen-court netball complex and that just should be swept under the rug.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's, it doesn't make sense. And, and the other sort of, like, there's so many, there's so many dubious, I'm not, look, I can't, I, I don't want to get sued, but, you know, some of the deals that go on with Bayside Council, like the Sandringham Golf Course has just been redeveloped. Now, Royal Melbourne, um, they've got, um, they've got sort of control over the, the, the maintenance of the, of the golf course. They, they use their, the golf, the golf course uses their sort of machinery and equipment to, uh, to maintain it. Um, but I'm, I'm telling you now, uh, when there's an event at Royal Melbourne where, you know, they want to, um, have the President's Cup or, uh, or a big event, and this is what I think, look, I've, I've produced a golf show for many years. I'm a, I'm a passionate golfer and I, I know that, um, you know, Royal Melbourne is, is one of the pinnacle locales in Australia, if not the world. When they, when they decide to have an event, the whole area gets, you know, taken over for weeks. And, uh, and well, they'll lose complete access to, uh, to their golf course because, uh, Royal Melbourne will, 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 you know, just walk in and say, um, you know, we, we've got an event on and council acquiesce. It's just, you know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to be a knocker, but, you know, there's always an angle with the Bayside Council and it's sort of, it's, it's just not good enough.
You know, and that's the unfortunate reality is that you, you just can't, you can't fight someone with those kind of funds. And I was lucky enough to be able to, you know, go to court, go to VCAT, go above the council process because I wasn't, wasn't, wasn't getting a fair hearing, fair shake and then ended up winning. But, you know, not everyone has that amount of money and it's just disappointing that, um,
Or, or tenacity, Andrew. And it's, it can be very draining and wearing, I, I would imagine. And like, this, this netball complex, as I say, you know, I love kids and I, I love junior sport. And the last thing I want to do is begrudge any, any young person that tried to play sport. But the way this council have handled it, it's just really, it's just, uh, it's just unprofessional and it's, it's incompetent, absolutely incompetent. And, um, as you say, very few people have got the, uh, have, well, the resources number one, or even the sort of the temerity and the sort of, and the, and the sort of courage to stand up to these people because they can wear you down.
Yeah, no doubt. And then look, some people might wonder why, uh, how this all fits in. And the reason why I want to get John on because it's the, it's the counter argument of, well, the council's, you know, going to back the conservation societies of the world who are heavily in the minority. It's just that the majority are very, very scared to, to voice up because they don't want some people protesting at the front of their house, which is the MO of, of Beaumouris Modern and the Conservation Society. So it just becomes, you know, the reason why I want to get John on is I want to show that all of a sudden, when council wants to build something and council wants to get something out of the line, it's just a matter of writing it, which is, which is our funds that are, you know, to the detriment of something being built. And
And then they just trample all over you. As you say, they just, just trample all over you without any sort of respect or sort of concern whatsoever. And it's just not good enough. Uh, just another area I might bring up. I don't want to sort of indulge this and you probably, uh, might go on a bit too long.
By all means.
But, um, you know, like, I, I take pride in, in, we've got a very nice little area here. Um, and, uh, and I take pride in my garden and looking after my house. Um, you know, Bayside Council and through the green sort of auspices, they plant these, these gum trees or these eucalypts as street trees. Now,
I've heard about this. This is, yeah, someone else has reached out about this as well. Go ahead. This is, this is unbelievable. Go ahead.
So the street trees, they invariably grow through the power lines. So what they have to do is they have to, they have to prune the trees to cut them back. And they look like some, some crazy creature from outer space. Not only that, the leaves then block the drains and just litter the streets with, with their leaves and crack the footpaths. So the council are forever coming in and, um, re, re, repairing the footpaths that the trees are cracked. Now, I've written, I wrote the council about this ten years ago because it just created a mess in my house. And I said, if this tree that I'm looking at right now falls on my house, well, council will be paying for it. I would take, put this down on record because the, the side of the street that I'm in, there's no power lines. So then council have a street sweeper that comes down every fortnight. There's a fellow that virtually with due respect, he battles to get in the truck. He gets in there eventually. He sits in his truck and he drives down the, the middle of the road because the cars are parked on both sides of the streets to sweep the streets. He just drives up and down with, with the rushes going around and around and around because all the cars are parked in the streets. And it's just, uh, it's just a futile exercise every fortnight. And this count, this, these contractors who do the council work have been doing this for the last, I don't know, twenty-odd years. You don't hear any tenders about who, who tenders for the maintenance of the, um, the footpaths or the, uh, or the, the maintenance of the, um, of the, of the street sort of cleaning. It's just done every year by the same people.
Without, without approval, um, because it is the nature strips and they just literally rock up and they'll plant the tree. Um, and you can't do nothing about it really. And if you try to take it out, they'll find you a shitload. And um, I, I know a few residents that have had ones, you know, that have been there for many, many years, that have had branches fall onto their cars and break windows and whatnot during, during severe storms. And they'll, they'll call the council and be like, we want this tree removed. It's dangerous. And they send someone out and they look at the tree. Oh no, it's perfectly fine. It's in good shape. We can't remove it. And it's like, well, what if this falls on my dog, my, my child? What if it goes through our windscreen as we're backing out of the driveway? No one cares. It's like no other tree that essentially in, 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 in Bayside and for the most part, Beaumouris, um, the trees, you know, have a greater right than, than human life. And that's, it sounds like an exaggeration, but there's many other stories that are similar to this of, of branches going through people's roofs that have been lodged as a, you know, with council. People have caught up and said, we need this tree removed. Like it was dangerous. Massive branches are falling off. Oh, no, no, it's perfectly fine. We can't, we can't obstruct the tree. It's, it's in good health. It's fine, but it's, but it's dangerous to our life, you know? And, and that's, that's kind of where we're at with these councils. Like you said, they've just been infiltrated with, once again, I must stress the minority voice, but they're well organised and they mobilise well. And they've got Facebook groups and all that. And then they mobilise and then they can cause a bit of a ruckus to people that, that want their privacy. And that's, that's kind of the leverage they use, which is just, it's just horrendous.
It is. And it's, it's really counted out to sort of, uh, blackmail and sort of standover tactics. And it's, um, it's, it's, it's so, it's so sad. It's, uh, I, I, I just feel for the way that, you know, where we're all going here, like Daniel Andrews doing his COVID dance and, um, you know, just, it's just, it's just, the older I get, Andrew, the more disillusioned I'll be coming. Um, uh, and it's just pretty sad to say, see the way this great country's going, but, um,
Yeah, well, I mean, just, just to round this off, what would your, what would your solution be to these councils? I have my thoughts on what I would, what I would do and what I would kind of recommend to, to ratepayers. Um, it's not, it's not pretty and it'll probably get me in trouble. But I mean, well, how do we get these people to listen? Because I'm, I'm from the school that you can only write so many council letters and lodge so many damn forms on their stupid websites that don't even work properly half the time. You can only go and meet these councillors a few times before you want to headbutt a wall because they're just giving you stuff read off a script. How do we actually, how do we actually engage change with some of these politicians?
Well, just to give you a background in the, into the, in the, um, sort of the psyche of these people who, who are, like, I've met with the CEO a couple of times. And it's just, as you said, it's just, it's a futile exercise. He's ready for you, for everything you, you, you may object against. He'll, he'll be very sort of polite and easygoing while you're there and nothing will get done. So, you know, it's just like it's a, it's a pre-done deal on everything. I'm not sure with, with the, all councils go in with, with the intention of sort of, you know, self sort of advancement, but I think we, we, if we get a CEO, an altruistic CEO who is for the masses rather than just, you know, splinter groups and their own self-interest. I think we're getting to a stage now that, um, that we're, we're appointing sort of, um, so-called democratic people who, who are no longer democratic. They're all about their own interests. And I think we need altruistic, um, sort of genuine people who are, who, who really are there for, for the masses and, 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 and the country. You know, it sounds a little bit grandiose, but I think we've got to stop thinking of ourselves and, and all our possessions and sort of start thinking about our community, our kids and, um, and really just doing some, you know, genuine things. And maybe a, a CEO rather than a, the, you know, group of, like, there's a cast of thousands up there, Andrew, at that, at the, at the, um, at the council chambers. And when they get there, you know, because they're, they're part of it, they just don't want to lose it. So they just all just bowl along and just get their mega bucks and, you know, just drain our, drain our pockets.
Yeah. And I, I think if they're overfunded, I think that's, um, that's, you know, what, what most small businesses could do with, you know, an iota of the, that, those kind of funds would be world-changing. Councils just squander it. And I made the point on previous interview that the couple of hundred odd thousand that I spent trying to fight for my rights to building, um, you know, in Beaumouris, I would have much rather donated that to the council to build a park for kids or, or to do some good in the community because, you know, it's just a pointless fight. And then the irony of my whole case was that it was my own, um, rates and taxes fighting me to stop me building new courts. So, you know,
That's even more, more soul destroying, isn't it?
Yeah, it's just such a shame because it's a beautiful part of, of Melbourne, Victoria. It's a, it's a beautiful part of the world. But I just think it's just become over-governed. And there's a lot of, a lot of people that have been, you know, um, mobilised within the community that are, are a fringe um, minority, but they, they have the loudest voices. And most people, I think until, until the majority of people in those areas actually start putting their foot down and saying, you know what? We've had enough of this. And I might cop a protest or two, or I might cop some flak. But if enough people do that, I truly believe it can affect change. But until everyone's kind of worried about themselves, I hope they don't, they don't see my building plans. I'll just, I'll just stay quiet. It's going to continue. Yeah. So anyway, John, thank you for your time.
Can I just ask you, could I just ask you one question, Andrew, before you go?
Go for it, mate.
Do you really think that these greens are as powerful as, as they are? Or could, could sort of, um, there be forces within sort of councils using greens as an excuse?
Oh, I think there's a, there's a mix. I think, um, look, there's one out of a hundred maybe that have the right intentions when they get involved about, you know, sustainable development and all that. And I understand all that. But, but, you know, once they get, once they get in there and realise how dirty that water is, I think they all just toe the same line.
I appreciate the effort you're putting in for this, mate.
No worries. Thanks for joining us.
Pleasure to talk to you. Bye-bye.
Cheers, mate.
Uh, once again, thanks for both those guests for joining us and actually getting them on the phone. I hope you enjoyed the interviews, just a bit of context and colour around everything we're discussing. I thought I'd also, there were, um, a few people that reached out that didn't want to join and, and be on record for whatever reason. And some of note, I'm going to read out now. Um, and you know, this is what I've got in print. I kind of go by what people have sent me and I have no reason to think these people are lying because their stories match up perfectly with what our council and Bayside City Council are about. Okay. Hi, Andrew. I've been in an ongoing fight with Bayside Council for more than three years to have a giant gum tree cut down in my backyard. It is huge and dangerous. My backyard is small. Uh, my block is only five fifty and the tree has totally outgrown the space. My main fight with councillors I need to remove is because my eleven-year-old suffers from an anxiety and he's scared this tree will fall on his room and kill him. Psychologist reports and GP letters detailing how this tree is affecting his health. And the council do not care. He has been sleeping on the floor in his brother's room for nearly three years and he wraps his entire head in a blanket. I'm so scared you'll suffocate. Um, because he's so scared. On windy nights, the tree is loud and loses many limbs. These trees are not protected and every arborist says they are not suitable for small backyards. A limb has cut my daughter's arm and council do not care. They will wait until someone is dead before they listen. The tree has more rights than human beings. I've written about fifty emails, have applied about five times, appealed three times and sat before a council vote. And still the answer is no. Clark Martin and Joe Samuel King are the worst, the most power-hungry and uncompassionate people. I can't understand how these people can have so much control. We would happily cut it down and pay the fine, but we cannot find anyone willing to cut it down without a permit. And it is too dangerous for my husband to do it. BCAT does not hear matters involving trees. It is heartbreaking that my kids are not full safe in their own home, made worse by being stuck at home in lockdown and being too scared to play in their own backyard. This was obviously sent last year. I even went to the Ombudsman uh, for human rights and they got me the council hearing but was outvoted four to three. Our last option is to get plans drawn up to build a shed or spa and never build it. And then we might get approval as we say we're trying to approve our property. But this all costs time and money that we shouldn't need to spend. Big developments like yours can remove many trees and good on you in brackets. But we cannot move, remove one tree. We have planted twenty, twenty suitable trees on our property, but the council don't care. It's really tiring and expensive. I don't know how they have so much power over what we do in our own homes. Good luck with your property and good luck for you, for getting a win against Bayside Council, which I did. This was obviously, like I said, a, a letter that was, um, sent a, a while ago. It is exhausting. I'm at a loss regards. That's from Danielle. I'm not going to mention the last name. That's just a small example. Now, you might think Danielle's putting mayo on it. Um, whatever it is, but I know a, a few people that have had issues with trees they're not allowed to remove, gone through their car wind screens, falling on their roof, causing damage to their roofing, that they're liable for and the council just washed their hands from. Now, this is not just a one-off case. So. Next one, Dear Andrew, years ago, two thousand and one, two thousand and two, a giant tree fifteen metres high that was growing from our elderly neighbour's backyard began showing signs of deterioration and weakness here in Beaumouris. It was great concern of my parents at the time as it was swaying, um, worrying each time there was a slight wind, never mind the fact that the trunk itself sorry leaned towards and over their house without going too much into detail. Now, we filed for a permit for the council to cut down due to the very real risk it posed. Bayside councillor and I believe leader at the time, Murray Thompson, who I believe is with the Beaumouris Conservation Society now, I could be wrong. Heard that name before. Might even be the fellow I called, um, came to inspect as a concerned representative. We then sent a specialist to check out the tree. How did the specialist check it out to determine its strength integrity? Question mark. By wrapping his arms around the tree, of course, and trying to shake it. A fifteen-metre-tall gargantuan tree with a trunk half the size of a sedan and a weight of possibly several tonnes tried to shake it by hugging it. After using this expert tactic of, uh, bear hug on the tree, he said it seemed steady to him. So no permit was issued. My mother conceded a plea for many months for Bayside to cut it down. Just a few months down the track, we went overseas to visit family in Europe. It was winter here at the time. Of course, a strong, strong wind comes. The wind toppled the tree and crushed half the house and caused extensive damage. Luckily, my father didn't travel with us, wasn't in the house at the time, only coming home to find what looked to be like a plane crash site. SES and the lot came in the middle of the night to clean the damage. Astonished, no one was hurt or possibly killed. After we returned from the trip, a few weeks later, my mum, obviously enraged, went to Bayside Council to inform them. Well, she was met by two men, one of which was CEO of Bayside Council, who, to keep things short here, didn't want to hear a bar of it. She began letting them know just how angry and enraged she was then about what had happened, despite her pleading unsatisfied with their dismissive attitude, essentially telling her to mind her own business. She raised her voice and refused to give in. However, did they ask her to leave? No, they walked her to a room with no windows, akin to a police interrogation room, where they sat her down and a man so large and obese, he could barely fit through the door, comes in and says, you know, I am. Being the fiery person she is, she goes, I don't know and I don't care who you are. Half my house is destroyed. Nothing was done about it. He responds, I'm the coordinator of all Bay, Bayside, whatever that means. He never quite elaborated on the statement before he was shown the images of the incident and the damage caused by what she was, what she was telling the council and what would happen in the end. We wouldn't, we couldn't even sue the council for negligence or the like, because apparently we would have to sue the neighbours first. A very nice couple that were in their nineties, I had known for my whole life, had lived there since the nineteen forties and have since passed on. As a tree was on their property, then the neighbours themselves would have to sue the council. In turn, the process obviously wasn't an option for us, nor for an elderly couple in their nineties. To this day, there is still small evidence of the damage and the council still demands rates to be paid on time. Murray Thompson went on to be, um, with the Victorian Legislative Assembly, once the interrogation councilman now owns the family-friendly cafe restaurant opposite Sandringham Hospital. Hmm. Bayside council is rife with coddled, overly pretentious councilmen who will do anything to minimize paperwork and prevent spending the cash, which is intended to be spent for that very reason. The worst part is that many of the high-end businesses in Bea Morris and Bayside area are contaminated with deep connections to the council, which in turn determine the landscape of local popular spots, often against the consensus of the public. It's my belief that these councillors withhold rights to permits for the sole reason of simply not wanting to fulfill extra paperwork and work any more than their seven and a half hour days. And it is not their duty to determine things such as structural integrity, capability, site management, site planning and determining whether certain works are truly either a reality or fantasy, let alone picking up a shovel or stepping in an excavator. All the best and kind regards, Nick. So another example, I mean, pretty, pretty obvious. Um, that's a cracker though. A neighbour's tree is leaning over into your yard, branches are fallen onto your tree. Who do you, who can you sue? Your neighbour. That'll go down really well. Um, and then the neighbour has to sue the council. Nice Ponzi scheme by the council they have set up. Last one for you. Our experience with Bayside and Bea Morris Modern starts with the purchase of a property in Bea Morris back in two thousand and fifteen. Purchased the mid-century home with ultimate goal of improving the property one day or another, knocking it down, building new, renovating or subdividing into two townhouses. What most people do to try and make an income with the next door, next door property while they live in the other one. I mean, that's now become the Aussie dream that everyone's doing. So using my experience, I completed the relevant due diligence checks before committing to purchasing the property such as site orientation and crossing locations, zoning, heritage crime and site overlays. Property ticked all the boxes and we couldn't entertain any of the three scenarios. There was nothing written in the planning overlay that suggested otherwise. So we committed to purchasing the property in late two thousand and fifteen. After some time pondering our next steps, we decided the best option for us as a young family would be to subdivide the property into two townhouses. This would provide my family with a home to live in and additionally an investment property that would help advance my family's financial position into the future. We proceeded and contacted an architect to start the process. Initially, conversations with Bayside Planner who was assessing the project were positive, much like my experience. As expected, there were few back and forth, but nothing major that changed the scope dramatically. And soon enough, we reached a design that ticked all the boxes for the project to go to advertising stage. At that time, I thought, great, we're on the right track. I'm really excited and thankful for this opportunity. How wrong I was. Something must have happened. After this point, internally at Bayside Council, of course, the project took an unwanted turn. It was late one afternoon, I received a call from an architect who advised that he had been receiving calls from random residents in Bea Morris, hounding them for proposing to build townhouses on my property. Why would some randoms be calling my, like my architect who was in Carlton? How do these people even know about my intentions for my property? We hadn't even advertised yet. After a couple of days, I was told some people from a group called Bea Morris Modern had found out proposing to demolish the house. And subsequently they went on the offensive. It turns out that I'd purchased the mid-century home that this group of people think they have some form of arbitrary ownership over and we had pissed them off. To my shock, a picture of my home and address was blasted all over their social media platforms with a call to arms, quote, save this property, end quote. The abuse within the comment section of Facebook and Insta left much to be desired. I experienced exactly the same thing, but, um, I like to take it on a tune and give it back. That's the difference. But even the tenant I had in the home for a couple of years even dropped the C bomb in the comments. All developers, developers are Cs. Yes, I am a, by definition, a property developer, but I'm a human being, right? These guys portray developers as some devil on a pedestal that is born to destruct the local communities whilst money is raining down on them. I'm an everyday guy that works ten, twelve-hour days, put food on the table and put my kids through decent school. Why is my line of work being demonized? Everything I have done within the, is within the law. I haven't done anything illegal. Why are we, why are they allowed to turn around and tell me how to earn a living? After a social media post by Bea Morris, um, Modern, council received numerous written objections. Remember that we hadn't even advertised yet. And phone calls from neighbours all opposing the demolition of the home. How do they get the intel without advertising? That's the question. From this point on, the planner's advice changed. Our setbacks on the first floor, which were okay a couple of weeks ago, were all of a sudden a problem. Slowly, 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 they picked the project apart, every detail. We had thirty-plus objectors. Still hadn't advertised yet. The planner was now not supportive and I had a plan that was within res code. All things considered at the time, I had to pull the plug on the project. To the letter of the law, the property I purchased can be demolished, renovated, it can be used to build one or two properties on it. My plans are within res code. There is no way in the planning legislation that states that you need to run the painful gauntlet of this local loony show. I understand there are people that are passionate about conserving these types of homes. However, their interest and hobbies should not trump my right to do whatever I wish to my property within the confines of the law. There are interests and hobbies that should not trump my right to build a family home or to advance my family's financial situation. I do not oppose objections. However, this right should come from the condition that council's objections should also be financially accountable if they are on the losing side here, fucking here. I added that. Why should I go on, go to the expense of defending myself? If I am within the confines of the law, if they have the issue, this financial burden should fall on them. The massive cost you would have paid in your own experience, plus the wasted taxpayers' money could all have been avoided. Objectors and councils would not think twice, but multiple times about objecting. If they had to go put their own money where their mouth is, this would ultimately filter the crap from the credible objections. Unfortunately, we find ourselves in a position where a neighbour who lives five hundred metres away can object and add on not months, but years to your project with very little financial implication to them. This is plain wrong. Speaking from other experiences, I have assisted clients who have been through multiple years of objection negotiations, VCAT lawyers, et cetera, et cetera. Only for a council to back down at last minute, request to shift the development two hundred millimetres south and the permit is then obtained, obtained. Why couldn't this be a discussion two years ago? I can sit and talk to you about these experiences for hours. We're talking about the loss of opportunity, financial impacts and the stress it places on families that these guys are responsible for with no accountability. The system is wrong and broken. Thanks for speaking out about this. Something needs to be done. You have a reach that could make actual change. Looking forward to the podcast. Cheers. And that's from George. Wrapping up. How do, how do we change this? How do we fix this? These, these people, I like what George said, that if, if you, if you want to lodge an objection, you need to fund it. Rate payers should not be paying for the Bea Morris Modern group to cozy up with councillors to be fighting people. Now, as I said at the start of this, I get why there is a process around, um, you know, lodging your permits. And then if there's objectors, they listen, but they're just taking the piss at this point. They are taking the absolute piss. I get it if someone's, there's a row of five hundred houses and some guy wants to come and build a five-story apartment building. I totally agree. Look, I'd still somewhat argue that he purchased that property. He should be able to do what he wants with it, but there'd obviously be a, a height law and whatever. And he wants to do that, that, that's what our objections are for. Um, the fact that people can buy a property and then halfway through their ownership, it's then deemed heritage is just absolutely mind-boggling. The value of that property goes down, as we've heard. Um, they can't repair things, they can't fix things, it becomes dangerous. It's just, it's just something that needs to change. And why are councils funding with rate payer money to back these? You know, I'll give them credit, they're well organized, they're mobilized quickly, they've got their, so, you know, Facebook groups and their Instagram page and they get people rolled up. I had, you know, death threats online. I had, on my Twitter, people were, you know, hoping ever building Bea Morris, blah, we don't want you here. All, all this kind of just derogatory stuff. Um, and that's what they do to people. They roll people up. And like I said, our Australian culture has shifted so much towards the tall poppy. That someone has done well in life, um, made good money, made the right decisions, played well in their, in their craft, their sport, their business, their investment. You know, they shouldn't be allowed to build that because I can't, oh, you know, I, I love that property when I was a little boy, when I was twelve years old in nineteen sixty-five. I used to walk past with my pop and now that guy wants to demolish it. No, I'm not going to let that happen. Like, you can't allow this to, to go on. You cannot allow this to go on. So. We try to be solution-based. Where do my solutions lie with, with all this? Well, I think the council's purse needs to be heavily diluted. They don't need by their numbers, hundred and sixty million by my numbers, quarter of a billion. I think, I don't think they need a hundred, I don't think they need fifty. I think they need to be heavily budgeted. And they need to have KPIs the same as, as, as a business. One thing, you have thirty days to, to yayo nao permit, council. Thirty days. It's not sitting on your desk for three months. And then you're going to reply with an email and you're missing this and then back and forth. And then twelve months later, you give a yes or no. And no, no, you've got thirty days. Thirty days. Rate payer doesn't receive a note within thirty days, a yes or a no, or what the process is, he can go ahead and do what the hell he wants with his property. Conservation groups, Bea Morris Modern, all these militant groups in different councils around Australia. You want to make life hard for everyday Australians to build, to put a shed in the backyard, to take a tree out. You fund it. Bea Morris Conservation Group, you want to stop a guy like myself from building on a, on a prestigious, beautiful part of Bea Morris. You buy the property, make it a, make it a bloody conservation site, put a few park benches in there and a little soccer pitch for the kids around the trees, of course. And do it along with it. You go buy it. How on earth are we letting people dictate what a, an Australian family, a mother or father with a child can do with a property that they paid for with their, with their hard-earned money? That they budgeted for, for many years, that as we've heard, they bought to live in, in not the best shape for ten years and then renovate and then be denied. Who are they? They are people that own interior design business companies that make things out of wood. They are people that have husbands who are golfers who play on courses that remove plenty of trees. These people are nimby's. They have nothing better to do. And they're, they are, they are poison to society. And until we start staring them in the eyes and not flinching, they're going to continue to do this shit. Until we let councillors do what they're doing, they're going to continue to do this shit. Um, that's, that's my solution. I, you know, I, I really think councils need to pick up the rubbish. Make sure the roads, the footpaths are clean and in a good nick and we don't have potholes. Build some nice parks for the kids and playgrounds and sporting facilities. Everything else, we don't need everything else. We don't need you flying a rainbow flag. We don't need you flying, uh, whatever, whatever's, whatever's trending PR-wise. We don't need you to be involved with, with, with the political left or the political right or be, you're a council. You're non-political. Service the people that are paying rates. You've got rate payers that are left, right, conservative, hate politics, love politics. Service them. Don't service them based on your political needs, but that's the way it's going. Of these councillors now, not all, the planning division that I dealt with, planning department at Bea Morris at the Bayside City Council should be commended. They were, they, they were very professional, um, not just because they gave me a result. We, we had really great dialogue. They replied in a timely manner. Um, I cannot speak more highly. So I don't take every, every councillor with the same brush, but it is the majority. And I don't blame some of these people. They're, they're in a fantastic job where they, you know, they're doing four, five-hour days, paid for ten, twelve hours, sipping lattes, joking around. I'll do a bit of work here, fill in a few forms. They're clocking it with life, mate. And they're getting, they're getting paid by the, the taxpayer. That's wrong. And then, then on the flip side, you've got the militants that are in there, sitting in, in their own little fart-filled cubicles, sniffing their own farts, thinking they're the God's gift to the environment, that are hypocrites. The Clark Martins of the world that worked on oil and gas rigs that are now going to dictate what you're doing in an environment where they're living because they're nimby's, right? So. Look, a bit of a long spiel, a bit of a long rant. I'd love to hear some feedback around what we can do to hold councils accountable. You know, the way, the way we are in Australia, we're so over legislated, we're so over governed, it just, it just takes, takes the mickie out of you where you're just like, I just can't be bothered. But I'm telling you, we need, we need to start pushing back and, and we need to really hold these people accountable to, to what, what our rates are paying for now. Does that mean not? You know, if we can get together in certain councils and say, nobody pay your rates, is that the solution? Is solution saying, why, why everyone pay fifty percent of your rates just so your rubbish at a minimum gets taken and the roads are clean? Maybe that's the solution. But these inflated salaries, these, these people need to stop. You don't need, you know, I would love to know the number of people that are on, you know, massive salaries to do bugger all. Um, go get a real job. That's why unfortunately people that have worked in the public sector cannot transition to their own business and they cannot transition in, into everyday work and life outside of the public purse because it's too easy. It's just too easy. You might say, oh, it's a bit rich coming from an athlete. Well, I've seen it firsthand. Um, there's a lot of people in the public sector that, and you know, I don't blame them. I blame the industry they're in that has no accountability where a ten-hour paid workday, they get barbed by doing three or four hours. You go by, surf, surf some social media, have some coffees, chat to the boys or girls, this, that, you know. You can't blame them for it. It's the system. We need to stop rewarding them, stop funding them. But do we have the balls to do that as a community? I think we're so divided individual right now, where everyone's just about me, me, me. I really don't have faith that we can do that, but I think that is one of the solutions anyhow. I will leave you with this. Give you some breaking news. I'm going to be selling four O one Beach Road, um, Bea Morris. Why? Number of reasons. First and foremost is that the address has been printed all over, um, the media. And that might be a bit petty, but look, we're looking to move on to, to something else. It's, it's, you know, there's a massive building delay in Victoria as it is. Um, there's, um, you know, just sourcing materials right now. We don't think, even with everything going perfectly, this gets, this building, this build gets done within three years. So we've decided we're not going to move ahead with it. Um, which is a shame because it's going to, it'll be a beautiful property, but you know, my, my loss is someone's gain. The beauty of this property is, it is the nicest. Probably one of the best positioned blocks within thirty minutes of the city that is oceanfront. Um, you won't, you won't get any, any better views anywhere. Um, along the peninsula, wherever you are, that's that close to the city. Um, the beauty of it is it has a house that you can move into right now and live in for ten, fifteen years. Subdivide the block at the back and sell that off if you want. You could, um, knock it down, develop it. We've got the plans and permits and approvals. Thank you, Bea Morris Conservation Society. I did the hard fight for, for whoever's purchasing it with plans in hand and approval to build the project that, uh, we had penned out. Um, or maybe a, a great developer, developer can buy it and put up a five-story apartment building. That would be my dream. I would, um, I'd cry myself to sleep for the next fifteen years if there's a developer out there, potentially even give you a discount. Finally, I, I'd give you a discount to purchase the property on, on what my asking price is. If you, um, commit in writing that you're going to build some monstrosity of a development, I would, um, I'd give you a discount on the sale of it. So keep that in mind, but, um, it will be popping up for sale in the next couple of days. So keep your eye on that. Um, and yeah, hopefully, hopefully it gets a good result for me. Like I said, I'm not, I'm not crying victim or crying poor out of all this. I'm going to, the property's gone up in value. So. You know, um, beggars can't be choosers, I guess. But, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm moving on from it. I thank everyone for the support. Um, I wanted to win this case against the Conservation Society and Bayside City Council. I, no matter what. And now that I've done that, we're in a position that we want to sell the property with our middle finger up at the Conservation Society and, and, and the council, um, you know, just to prove a point. So, and just maybe petty again, but something we want to do. But yeah, keep a lookout. It's going to be, um, it's going to be launched on listingloop.com.au first, check out listingloop.com.au. And then about three or four days after that, we'll get it on, on all the, um, the mafia big websites of, of domain and real estate.com.au that basically, you know, have some mafia tactics that just absolutely own the Australian market as far as real estate advertising, um, which is interesting in itself, but a topic for a whole nother day. Thank you again. Rogue Boggs, Common Sense Series. This was the council rant. Let me know what you think. Thanks.